I call the 3:00 PM session of the August 26, 2025 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that we'll take up in this evening's meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item of Business Consideration Day is Agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is our six-zero. Jennifer. Agenda item number six, I will have a report on the delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Dinestaff. Scott, welcome.
This is a report for the end of July 31, 2025. We collected eighty-nine point five seven percent of the twenty-four personal property taxes. During the month, we collected one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-five. As of July 31st, we collected ninety-four point seven-eight percent of the real estate taxes. During the month, we collected fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Since January 1st, 2025, TACS has collected seven-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. In our debt set-off, we received seven thousand on August 15th. For the year total, our debt set-off was three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars collected. And so far, in the month of August, we collected one-hundred-and-fifty-two D M B stops. Our real estate bills, twenty-five, will be in the mail this week. So you'll hopefully receive yours and see that. We also like to give them next day Monday so they can matter at us when they call back in. And I gave each of you the copy, the envelope they're going out in, to remind you that we have changed the late date for real estate taxes this year. They are due October 1st, and you have until October 31st to pay it without a penalty. That'll be on the outside of the envelope. So if anybody calls, says anything to y'all that I didn't know about it, it's on the outside of the envelope. And if any of y'all are out public speaking or campaigning or anything like that, please mention this to all the people you speak to, because we have to get out there and wear your mouth. Please do. So, have any questions?
Just as a reminder, I know we've talked about this before, people can come into your office and make payments on their taxes all year?
Yes.
And then also...
All the payment stuff, you have to pay it before the late date and not receive a penalty, but they can pay any amount during the year before they receive a bill to my office.
And you also have an online option?
Online, by phone. It's all expressed in the back of the bill there, different ways they can make payments.
Thank you.
Also, I want to kind of remind y'all, this fall will have a reassessment the Commissioner of Revenue's been working on, probably December through October, December. So next year will be a different year for real estate taxes. Y'all be ready.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, we'll have a presentation by the Martinsville Henry County Heritage Museum. We have with us Holly Kozelski, Executive Director, and she's going to provide the board with an update on the activities at the museum. Holly, welcome.
Thank you. Brandon, okay, can you get this up? Okay, thank you all for having me. And can you hear me? That's what is mine. All right, thank you. And Brandon, can you get that up? Thank you very much. All right, I'm Holly Kozelski, the Executive Director of the Martinsville Henry County Historical Society. Appreciate the time. I have a lot of information to get through, and as my preacher Robbie Benfield says, if you listen fast, I'll talk fast. So, the Martinsville Henry County Heritage Museum is a, has been a local history museum for about the past fifteen years. But we are about to open a significant, major, national-level museum in the Annex. The opening day will be 3:00 to 8:00 PM, Saturday, September 6th, with a special private reception for members only the night before. Dr. King, Dr. Mervyn King and Virginia King, right there, they are behind this museum. They have been collecting antiques for the past sixty-five years. They designed, mostly he designed the museum, and they donated all of the funds for the construction of the museum. They donated the money to the Historical Society for the extra cost it would take to carry out this addition to the museum and the museum houses, the antiques they collected almost over seven decades. So, the courthouse, this is the old Henry County courthouse, it was built in eighteen-twenty-four. In nineteen-ninety-six, when the county was going to move into this building, it was left empty. The Historical Society was formed to save the building and to put the building to use. That they did with some significant grant funding, including a Save America's Treasures grant and a HUD grant and Harvest Foundation grant. In 2010, the Henry County Board of Supervisors deeded the courthouse to the Martinsville Henry County Historical Society. That is all very well appreciated. It is a very fine history museum, and we have many compliments from visitors across the nation on that, on that building. The building you see behind is the Annex, thirteen thousand square feet. Construction began in 2023, about two years ago. We spent about a year setting it up, and it is finished. The collections are for the Kings. Most of the setup was done by Dr. King, by his sidekick, his right-hand man, Jack Stewart, a fabulous volunteer, and then Mrs. Virginia King. The glass, we have a lot of glass walls that line the walls of the museum, and so we have displays inside the glass walls. The glass came from Prest Glass, and the forms of the walls were custom-made by Active Wall, so that's a Henry County and a Martinsville business. That's the guys from Active Wall doing an unload of glass. Now, we have shelves, we got three standing shelves that sit in the middle, the middle aisles. We would get loads of sixteen-hundred pounds a load, and we had the trustees from the Martinsville City Jail lined up to help us unload. Well, then a delivery came a day early, we couldn't get anybody, and I believe Dr. King and I unloaded that first sixteen-hundred-pound load by ourselves. That taught me to keep a pair of sneakers and a pair of jeans at work at all times. And there we have Michael Sangadolce, volunteer, and then Jack Stewart and Dr. King unloading a load. You would not believe the valuables. Dr. King moved across the road. He would walk over there with no security. He would not even look around to see if there were thieves on the corner with tens of thousands of dollars on that cart or hundreds of thousands of dollars on that cart. I am happy to say that everything is now all safely locked up in the museum with a very high-security, very fancy security system. But that was pretty wild to see that happen. There's Dr. King and Hunter Haskin hanging the rugs, Davis Scott and Jack Stewart bringing things down from another building. I'm just quickly showing you what went into this, because it was a really amazing and unusual year. Davis Scott and the intern Rayleigh Wilson hang in paper drafts of signs, which then, once we're satisfied with them, I got printed up at Collinsville Printing. As I'm showing you these slides, really, you're seeing some of the artifacts that are going in the museum also. There the Kings are and Ann Martin with toys that were brought over. We cleaned the toys with WD-40. That's just brackets. There's Davis Scott cutting boards. There was just how many linear square feet of boards was cut up and made into shelves and display areas there. John Overd's helping to move a Remington statue. And John was helping to move this thing across the road. He asked Dr. King, "How much would you say this is worth?" And Dr. King said, "Oh, about a million dollars," and very matter-of-factly, and John said, "I was never so nervous as I knew I was holding a very heavy million-dollar item in the middle of the road." There they are, emptying out Dr. King's building in Hillcroft and Rangeley where he had his train collections. They're setting up shelves there. That's me, mostly I do paperwork. Every now and then, I do something useful. Eric Boaz of Minnet. Minnet is the Martinsville City's internet company and phone service, and it is a fantastic service. They've done a lot for us, they set up a lot, we called them often to help, and we call Minnet, they're there in three minutes. And so when Eric brought his son by to look, I told Eric, "Take your son in and show him what you've done, and look at the look on his son's face. He's really assessing it." That's just the setup cleanup as we bring things in and work on them. Jack Stewart, Michael Sangadolce and Dr. King putting stuff up. There's Dr. King, the king in his kingdom. Steve Keizer and Virginia King putting Native American rugs on display. This is interesting. Some of the shelves in one of the display areas, well, the shelves, a lot of them are bought locally, and the shelves there that they're putting in, display cabinets were from Holt, C.W. Holt fashions. And I happened to notice on the inside of one of those shelves, it said, "Two hundred hats, two-three, nineteen-sixty-three." Just an interesting little piece of history. So, you already kind of saw what's in the Annex, but this is really what the Annex was built to display, Native American artifacts. A gambling parlor, you may have seen that set up in the back corner of Jefferson Plaza for many years. Pottery collections, basket collections, an entire collection of horse tack. This saddle is embellished with sterling silver and fourteen-karat gold embellishments. Electrical, well, early medical devices, including these electric shock machines from the eighteen-sixties, when they thought that shock therapy cured anything from a toothache to pneumonia. Can you imagine going to the doctor back then? Baskets, tools, antique tools, firearms, toys. These ships, some of these ships are steam-engine operated, some of them are operated by wind-up, and they actually will move across the table or move across water. A tremendous lock collection, more tools, look at those cowhorn pieces of furniture from the Victorian era. That is from the Marklin train collection. We've got Marklin trains, Lionel and other early American brands. Now, field trips. We have a special anonymous donor who wants to be sure that kids can experience history firsthand. That donor has donated, has set up a fund to pay all school field trip fees, all admission fees for the next two years. That is a great program. Schools will call me, and so far, we work with city schools, and we are, we, the carpet is rolled out for county schools. There's so much that the schools can do. I can teach any lesson according to the state standards of learning on a six-step lesson plan. I don't know if the six-step lesson plan is out of style now, but that's what I learned in college, and that's what I can do. But we honestly will do free field trips, and also, we've been able to extend that to some rest homes and some homes for disabled adults, because we understand that their funds are limited, and they get so much enjoyment and enrichment out of it. That's some kids from Martinsville Middle School. We have plenty of hands-on activities for the kids to do, as well as things for them to look at. I will say, when this group came, they were fascinated. By the time this group came, we had the King's portrait on the wall. Before him, we didn't have that. So the King's portrait was up, and they were looking at it, and they really wanted to know about who gave these antiques and why. And then they were all hurried upstairs at the end to wait for the school bus. And Dr. King walked up in the back. He was not announced. He just walked up and walked in, and they saw him and burst into spontaneous applause. It was beautiful. It was just a, just the, to see these kids' reactions to the antiques and to the fact that people put this together and made it accessible to everybody. We also rent out the Annex space for your special events. We have different areas. The Piedmont Regional Justice, Piedmont Regional Criminal Justice Training Academy uses our courthouse to, twice a year, for training on how to handle court cases. So we do that, we do parties, we do family reunions, class reunions, baby showers, Charity League meeting. Charity League is going to have, oh, she's gone. The Charity League is going to have an event there, October 18th, in fact. We have a kitchenette where your caterer can warm up and keep cold the food that they're going to serve. That's our conference room, that's India Brown with Harvest Foundation addressing a Conference of the Dan River Nonprofit Network. That's a spring tee, it's a social event we put on. So, I invite you all to come visit us, you can't miss us. Easiest address on the map, 1 East Main Street. We are open from 10:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon, Tuesdays through Fridays, and then from 10:00 until 4:00 on Saturdays. There's a ten-dollar admission, five dollars for students, and sixty-five and over, and it's free for, for kids, for babies. I'm sorry, free for members. So you can also visit us on our website, mhchhistoricalsociety.org, and I run a local history column every day. It gives snippets of news of what happened here one-hundred-and-seventy-five, fifty and twenty-five years ago, and it's not just political news, it is social, it is the garden clubs, the churches, the neighborhoods, the organizations. It's really interesting. And again, I invite you to our opening day, Saturday, September 6th, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it goes without saying that to, until you see it, and I've seen a portion of it, you can't truly appreciate the background in all this. Thank you for giving us a, a small sample of the background in this, and I think seeing it in person reveals it all, that a lot of collection from all over the world and a lot of time put into this. So thank you, Holly, and thank you, Mr. and Ms. King. That takes us to Agenda item number eight, Financial Matters, 8A, an additional appropriation referencing the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Grant Funds for the 911 Center. Mr. Wagner.
Tierra Dillard, Director of the Martinsville Henry County 911 Center, is asking the board to appropriate two grants totaling four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. First grant in an amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is from the Geospatial Services Grant Program. Director Dillard explains the grant will provide funding to update computers and servers within the 911 center, as well as assist the center as it works toward accreditation. The second grant for three-hundred-thousand dollars is also from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, known as the Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program for shared call handling equipment. Director Dillard explains that this grant supports a regional effort to replace and upgrade shared C H E equipment across participating 911 centers. And neither one of the grants require a match, and Director Dillard is here, should you have any questions.
Great. The board has background material on that. What action would the board like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand received from two Virginia Department of Emergency Management grants for infrastructure improvements to the 911 center, as well as regional call handling equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Eight-B, an award of contracts for replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to award the following three contracts for the purchase of replacement vehicles for the department. Three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to Haley Ford to purchase seven twenty-twenty-six Ford Police Interceptor All-Wheel Drive Utility Vehicles to replace high-mileage vehicles within the control division. Another contract in the amount of eighty-six thousand, six-hundred dollars to Haley Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram to purchase two Dodge Durango vehicles to replace high-mileage vehicles in the Investigations Division. And the third contract being an amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars to R.K. Chevrolet to purchase one twenty-twenty-five Chevrolet 2500 Express Cardo Van for the Animal Services Division, replacing a high-mileage van currently in service. Pricing for all three contracts is based on the Virginia Sheriff's Association Vehicle Procurement Special Program and specifications, and funding for the replacement vehicles is included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Lieutenant Colonel Haskins is here, should you have any questions.
In regard to awarding of contracts for replacement vehicles, what action would the board like to take?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract totaling four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars to purchase the replacement vehicles for the sheriff's department, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Eight-C, an award of contract referencing ground maintenance equipment for Parks and Rec. Mr. Wagner.
Roger Adams, Director of Parks and Recreation, is asking the board to award a contract of fifty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars to Smith Turf and Irrigation to purchase a self-contained turf sprayer to be used at the Smith River Sports Complex. Smith Turf and Irrigation submitted the lowest bid for this project. Funding is included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. If you have any questions, Ms. Powell can probably answer.
In regard to this award of contract for the grounds maintenance equipment, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award a contract to Smith Turf and Irrigation for fifty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars to purchase a self-contained turf sprayer for the Monogram Foods Smith River Sports Complex, as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. Even though it's not on the agenda, Ms. McKinnon, I believe that you had mentioned to me that there's a possible matter of, that would require financial approval?
And I'll bring it up under information lines.
Okay, we'll be, we're at that point, so we'll take up informational items, and we'll start with Dr. Kowal.
Okay. I have been part-time volunteer involved in a fun project in Martinsville Henry County. It's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. The Virginia Commission has the two-hundred-and-fiftieth American Revolution Commemorative Commission is supporting, in addition to the Tobacco Commission supporting, an engine being built by, an engine and a car being built by Joey Arrington, Joey Arrington Engines. He has the record, the, the record in the United States with the fastest engine of two-hundred-and-forty-four point nine miles per hour, and for the celebration, the two-hundred-and-fifty celebration, he is building an engine and a car to go two-hundred-and-fifty miles an hour to break his record, and has been invited to Cape Canaveral to, to show the car. And that is something, there's a project for, he, he has, lives here and he works here, and he, the project is a project for our community to get around, of course, in the state of Virginia, a lot of support in the state, a lot of support in the country, and I just, I'm just beginning to work with them on that, I think, just for information, and that's why I'm just mentioning it here, for information purposes, just to begin to spread the good news and the, the exciting news of a project like that coming out of Martinsville and Henry County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt.
The only thing I have is the Town of Ridgeway will be doing their groundbreaking for the pickleball courts on September the fifteenth at 10:00 AM. The board member should have got an invitation earlier today, and the town will be sending it out for the, the public very soon.
Thank you. Mr. Dillard?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Buchanan?
I do, and I have some representatives here from the Homer Dillard Post 78. The veterans of Homer Dillard Post 78, which is located in Fieldale, Virginia, have been an integral part of the Horse Pasture District for many, many years. And they work with our youth, with educational opportunities. They were very busy all day today doing that. They award scholarships, and they participate in the burial of our veterans, so they're very active in our community. Now, they have faced some challenges here over the last few years with their building. It's in need of renovations. Their parking lot has been washed out a number of times, and they've been working hard to raise the money to make these repairs, but they're falling a little bit short. And Mr. Curtis Milner had reached out to me in regard to that. So with the board's approval, I'd like to take five-thousand dollars from the Horse Pasture District Impact Fund and give that to them to help with the renovation of their building and also the, the parking lot. And I realize that they will be required to provide any necessary paperwork or receipts that our finance department would need in order to complete this process. So I would like to make a motion to take five-thousand dollars from my Horse Pasture District Impact Fund for the Homer Dillard Post 78.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer.
And I do want to thank them again for all that they do in our community.
I, as well, have witnessed a number of different things, not only the fundraising efforts themselves, so they're not just sitting waiting for someone else. Fundraising efforts that you all have, and the largest attendance that I know of in the entire area for a Veterans Day celebration every year, three-hundred-plus people almost every year that, that I've seen, and you all do a great job of that, and thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for your past service.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
No, sir.
And I don't have anything. Mr. Wagner?
A couple, a few things. I want to welcome our new Public Safety Director, Mr. Tim Duffer, to Team Henry County, and I'll ask him if it's okay with you to come to the podium and take thirty seconds and introduce himself.
Mr. Chairman, I would thank you all for putting your trust in me, and Mr. Wagner for putting your trust in me. My name's Tim Duffer. I'm originally, I worked for the Dampfire Department for thirty years, and I just wanted to, again, say thank you all for putting that trust into me, and I want to work together with y'all and all of our agencies as a team. That was kind of, just, we're one team to provide public safety for the citizens of Henry County and, and all of the volunteers that we have. Volunteers are a vital part. I'm also a volunteer at heart, and I've spent most of my career and still a life member of an organization in Pittsman County, so I understand the volunteer struggles. And that's really all I have, and I can answer questions if anybody has a question.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple notes about some other personnel changes you may see when you get upstairs. Julie Shelton has worked for us for many years, and she had an opportunity to make a transfer to our purchasing department when Gail Minter retired, so Julie has taken on new roles in the purchasing department, and we have high expectations. She will excel through that department if there's an opportunity to her to really grow in our organization, so we're excited about that for her. And when you get upstairs, you'll be greeted by a new face. We recently added Ms. Ciara Glenn to our team, so you'll see her when you get upstairs as well. So introduce yourselves, if you would, please. And then just one last reminder, Monday is a federal, state and local holiday. Monday, September 1st is a county holiday, Labor Day. One other calendar reminder, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet is on September 9th, so if I hadn't heard from you about that, please let me know if you want to attend, and we'll meet you at the register.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number 10, if someone will cite the items allowed by the Code of Virginia and the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for allowing us to go into closed meeting.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that the board convenes in a closed meeting, as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board and the Patrick and Henry Community College Board, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of the acquisition-disposal of real estate, 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries, and 2.23711A6 for discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero. Jennifer. See the board members upstairs in five minutes. Closed meeting, known a motion by Ms. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Powell, will you appoint the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, with the best of your knowledge, only public business matters are off the exempted from open meeting requirements in the Code of Virginia, Section 22-3711, for purpose discussed or considered in closed meetings as the Code. Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillard?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dillard, I believe that you have, for the board's consideration, a district forum for the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint Twala Dillard to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board to fill the term of Greg Pytts. to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board to fill the term of Greg Pykes that ends on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Pruitt, I believe for the Patrick and Henry Community College Board, you have an appointment for the board's consideration?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to appoint Dr. Buzz Custer to an unexpired term on the Patrick and Henry Community College Board that will expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wyatt, I believe that you may have an item that we need to consider.
Yes. I think all of you are well aware that the Public Service Authority has been a part of tremendous economic development efforts over the last 20 years, and this board making decisions to invest in shell buildings and high-quality industrial sites such as the Patriot Center and Commonwealth Cross. And the PSA has been a vital part of that. For example, PSA employee Tim Pace is the chief engineer and one of our lead votes when we have economic development activity. He meets with us with companies. In his office, Pramac Alexander is an engineer. He is assigned at Commonwealth Crossing every day. He gets in his car in the morning and reports there to work to see that the grading work on Lot 2 is done effectively and efficiently and within the parameters of our contracts. So that's just two examples of the PSA and how much it invests in economic development and into our community, and do it without any compensation for, you know, the city or the county. One of our largest taxpayers in Henry County is also one of the largest water users in the county. And had the PSA not had the foresight and investment in putting infrastructure into Commonwealth Crossing, then that would not be a reality either. Right now, we're talking about new industries on Lot 2 at Commonwealth Crossing, and we recently received a grant that was written by PSA employees to start planning on Lot 3, which will create another 80-acre site for future development there at Commonwealth Crossing. The Public Service Authority recently received news that our financial application to the Virginia Department of Health has been approved for the construction of a new water line to Commonwealth Crossing. The new line will provide redundancy and additional capacity at CCBC for use by future and current tenants should they need it. The project also brings much-needed relief to approximately 265 potential residential customers along the corridor who currently lack access to public water. Water quality testing reveals that more than half of those on private wells in that area contains colorful bacteria, and many residents report low yields or complete lack of water. The financing that we have received from Commonwealth, PSA has received includes $3.3 million in principles for goodness, that's the Department of Health's term, for a grant. So we've received $3.3 million in grant, and a loan for the remainder portion of the project at a total cost of $8.5 million to build that water line from Horse Pasture to Commonwealth Crossing that would provide a redundant water source to the industrial park, increase the capacity of water going to the industrial park, as well as offer water services to 265 residents in the Horse Pasture and Ridgeway districts. Saying all that, the PSA is asking the board supervisors for $6 million to address current financial obligations so that the PSA can take advantage of the grant and the very low interest loan for this water line project at CCBC.
Mr. Ryan, I believe you may have a motion to offer in regard to this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to appropriate $6 million from the general funds to the PSA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wyatt, do you have any items that the board should consider before recess?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item, too.
Board members, Mr. Pruitt, you've indicated you have one.
I have a motion for an opioid claim. I move that the board of supervisors approve the resolution dated today regarding pending opioid claims with the Sackler family and Purdue Pharma, and have outside counsel execute the documents necessary to participate in the settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Six zero, Jennifer. Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. I did not made a note of that. Are there items from board members prior to a recess? If not, we'll declare a recess. Start promptly at 6:00 p.m. I'll call the 6:00 p.m. session of the August 26, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order for my recess from our afternoon session. Like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that we'll take up later in this meeting as agenda item number 19. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and taking part in county business. Our first agenda item is agenda item number 11. It's a Virginia General Assembly Resolution Presentation honoring Rita Shropshire, and we have with us Delegate Eric Phillips. Delegate Phillips.
Good evening. So I do have a House joint resolution from the House of Delegates Committee, Rita Jean Shropshire. And so Rita Jean Shropshire, devoted volunteer leader and highly admired resident of Ridgeway, retired as chair of the Henry County Electoral Board in 2024, concluding more than six decades of exemplary service. A native of Carroll County, Rita Shropshire moved to Martinsville to work at the DuPont plant, and then ultimately settled in the town of Ridgway in Henry County in 1962. She became an active member of the community shortly after relocating to Ridgway. She elected as an elections officer and subsequently became the chief elections officer, and served in that capacity for 28 years until she was elected to her first of five consecutive terms on the Henry County Electoral Board. During her 15 years on the Henry County Electoral Board, she worked tirelessly to uphold electoral integrity and efficiency. She was a trusted mentor and source of institutional knowledge for precinct workers, and helped implement new technologies to enhance the voting process. Rita Shropshire also offered her wise insights through the ladies auxiliary of the Ridgway Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department. She was a 50-year member of the Order of the Eastern Star, Martinsville Chapter 66, where she served two terms as worthy matron. In addition, her career of community service, she is a dedicated member of the First Baptist Church of Ridgway, where she served as church clerk, Sunday school teacher, deacon emeritus, chair of the Women's Missionary Union, and chair of the Oversight and Fundraising Committees during the construction of a new church building. If I ever pastor a church, I'm with Rita there. And in all of her endeavors, Rita Shropshire has been supported by her husband Howard, her daughters Joyce and Rachel, and their families, including two beloved grandchildren, Allison and Davis. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates, the Senate concurring, that the General Assembly hereby commend Rita Jean Shropshire on the occasion of her retirement as chair of the Henry County Electoral Board, and be it firmly resolved that the Clerk of the House prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Rita Jean Shropshire as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for her legacy of contributions to the Henry County community, her inspirational commitment to public service, and dedication to maintaining a healthy democratic process.
Agenda item number 12, we have a Virginia General Assembly Resolution Presentation honoring Autos by Nelson, and again, Delegate Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So whereas Autos by Nelson is a esteemed automotive group based in Martinsville, proudly marks its 50th anniversary in 2025, celebrating five decades of growth, service, and community commitment. Founded in 1975 by GR and Joanne Nelson as a single-point-four dealership in Bassett, Virginia, Autos by Nelson has expanded into a thriving automotive group with eight franchises under six rooftops. Today, Autos by Nelson includes a police center, a towing company, rental car service, salvage yard. It's reflecting, reflection of its evolution into a comprehensive automotive service provider. Under the leadership of Barry Nelson, the 2024 Virginia Time Magazine Dealer of the Year, his son Lee Nelson, the family legacy continues to drive Autos by Nelson forward. And the Nelson's dedication to customer service, innovation, and community engagement has solidified Autos by Nelson as a trusted name in the industry. Autos by Nelson has demonstrated a deep commitment to the communities that it serves by providing a variety of local events that make a difference in people's lives, as well as numerous local organizations, such as the Salvation Army of Martinsville, the Grace Network of Martinsville and Henry County, Martinsville Henry County Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the Southside Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And Autos by Nelson commemorates its historic 50-year milestone that Nelson family and their team look ahead to the future while honoring the foundation of hard work and integrity that has defined their success. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Autos by Nelson hereby be commended for its legacy of service on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, and be it reserved further that the Clerk of the Court of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Autos by Nelson as an expression of the House of Delegates' admiration for the automotive group's history and its contributions to the Commonwealth.
Agenda item number 13, we'll take up General Howard Way Matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDI.
Just to bring you up to date, I know everybody's got a lot of concerns about the mow. We are about halfway through our second round for our secondary roads. But I'm telling you, we can see in the Johnson grass, it's really giving us a problem. But, you know, we're trying to focus on, we've got site distance complaints around school bus stops or intersections. We try to prioritize those. So if anybody, you know, has any of those concerns, they can call our 1-800-4 road number and submit a work order. They can contact the office. So that's where we are. We'll finish that up and probably start back on our primary routes. Whenever it starts raining, turns cold, maybe around the 1st of October, and get that last round done. We've got a couple of big projects, pipe projects that we're finishing up on Meadowwood Trail and the Great Road. The Great Road should finish up completely in a couple of weeks. May have that road open by the end of the week. And Meadowwood Trail, we've got about two weeks to go on yet. And for our paving, we finished that up also. We've completed North Fork Road, and that's the last thing on our pavement schedule for this year. And that's all I have.
Does anyone have any items from Ms. Hughes?
I do. One more, Lisa. I forgot to go with this one with you. The cloverleaf there, as you go up Highway 58 West, you know, going toward Handys, the cloverleaf there. I know you will, someone bushhogs it maybe once or twice a year. Is there any way we can some way clean that up, get someone to adopt that with the trees? I know there's growth under those trees, but make that look a little bit better, particularly, you know, as people are going up 58?
It does. And I'd love to have somebody to adopt it. But we'll do that full mow, the last round that we mow. We'll get all of that. And we mow wider on our last round, and which we'll do and take care of that.
Can get that much done?
Yes.
Is there any way you can do anything with the trees and the undergrowth, or would I need to approach, like Gateway or Tracy about that?
We'll see what we can do.
Would you do that? All right, thank you.
And, yes.
Well, I know I've had conversations, and I repeat myself a lot, as far as being new to the board and everything, and the highway matters coming up and what we refer to as the trash and the grass. And also, very recently, I've had lots of requests for road repair or questions about potentially a repair that has been done that the constituents, they are saying that's unsatisfactory. If a pothole has been filled or whatever, and then, you know, again, not satisfactory. And also, I was going to ask you potentially, because I have a few people who want to discuss these matters as far as the roads and the paving and what can and cannot be paved. And I've asked also Delegate Phillips and Delegate Williams, who is not here, but I did ask Eric if he would just stay a minute so we could talk about it, because what we hear a lot is about the roads, and then we talk about the budget, and then from the Department of the DOT, we hear, well, it's not in the budget, because we're in rural Virginia. And those, well, the budget that is budgeted for our roads is not as much, and the budget for our roads, the budget is not adequate for what we need. So as terms of the protocol, Mr. Adams, I didn't know, I asked Delegate Phillips to stay for this conversation, or if, Ms. Hughes, if you would just kind of, if you wouldn't leave this time, and would like to hear from some individuals, committees that are working really hard to do this, and then I also have other just bullet points I would like to go over. And in terms of the protocol, would we do that now, or do you want to hold off until the end?
What, can you indicate how many we're talking about? Because once I open matters presented by the public, that would include anyone else that wishes to speak on the matters presented by the public.
That has already been signed up, like signed up the seven days prior to, that's also?
Yes, yes.
Okay. It's, again, whatever. I just want to make sure, Ms. Hughes, that you stayed.
She had indicated before the meeting she was okay with staying.
Oh, good. Perfect. Okay, thank you. And Delegate, are you okay to hang out a little bit longer? Okay, thank you.
One quick question. I talked to you probably sometime back about trying to get a sweeper down through Collinsville. Is that still somewhere in the realm?
We actually did sweep Collinsville, I thought. We do have a sweeper. I'll make sure that we did.
Yeah, I don't remember ever seeing it come through.
Okay. I'll check.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. That takes us. Agenda item 14, public hearing for rezoning application, R-25-11, John D. Horsley and Claudia G. English. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay. This property is located at 1317 The Greg Roads in the Blackberry District. Property is on tax map 39318, has lots four and five, and also a portion of 393 lot 353. The applicant's request in the rezoning were approximately seven acres from suburban residential district to agricultural district A1. The applicant wishes to market the property for the potential to keep agricultural animals on there. Following public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
I'll open public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:14. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Anyone? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the public hearing at 6:14. This is in my district. If someone would make the motion on my behalf, I agree with the planning commission as far as approving this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Agenda item 15, public hearing rezoning application, R-25-12, Roger and Deborah Wheatley, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located northeast corner of the intersection of Riverside Drive and Governor Stanley Highway. It's in the, also in the Blackberry District. Property shown on tax map 15.8 is lot 163A. The applicant's request on the rezoning were approximately three and three-quarter acres from commercial district B1 to agricultural district A1. The applicant wishes to rezone the property and has applied for the required special use permit to allow for the development of an RV park. The Board of Zoning Appeals Hearing on this matter for the special use permit is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 P.M. in the same room. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:15. Is there anyone desiring to comment during this public hearing time for this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:16. Also, in my district, I agree with the planning commission, and this has been discussed with Mr. Clark and myself going back a couple of months. If someone would make a motion on my behalf?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Agenda item number 16, rezoning application, R-25-13, Whitney Slay.
Okay, this property is located at 1850, sorry, Daniels Creek Road in the Collinsville District. Property shown on tax map 29760 is lot six. The applicant has requested rezoning of a lot containing a residence from suburban residential district to office and professional district B3. The applicant wishes to rezone the property and has applied for the required special use permit to offer a transitional living opportunity for young adults aging out of the foster care system. The Board of Zoning Appeals Hearing on this matter is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 P.M. in the same room. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff also recommend approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:17. Is there anyone desiring to address the board during this public comment time on this rezoning application? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:17. Mr. Bryan, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have got no objections to the rezon of this request, so I'm making a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Agenda item 17, public hearing, proposed siting agreement with Firebird Solar LLC. Mr. Lyle, do you have any background that we need to have on this?
Yes, Firebird Solar LLC desires to develop a solar power generation location at the, it'll be at the end of Ebony Drive in the Ridgeway District. They have obtained from the Henry County Board of Zoning Appeals a special use permit that has been, as development process went on and negotiations for this siting agreement went on, has been extended through 2026. So, and I'll just point out, the document that was provided in the electronic package shows that it's been extended again since then, so it's valid through next year to begin development of the site. Of note, the Code of Virginia allows siting agreements between the locality and the developer. And part of those siting agreements can be cash payments. In this case, Firebird has proposed to make installment payments as described in the agreement for a total of $75,000 if the site is fully developed and brought online. And it's been, this public hearing has been properly advertised for tonight.
All right, I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:19. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this? I see one hand. I have a brief policy statement to read as you're coming to the podium. This is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. State your name. We know the subject matter, the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you agreed you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Ed Switzer. I'm with Catalyze. We're the developer and long-term owner-operator of the system. I'm from out of town. And just a little background about Catalyze, we're a fully integrated renewable energy services company and independent power producer. As the, you know, in that capacity, like I said, we're the developer as well as the owner-operator of the system. We currently have 225 megawatts of projects in operation right now in seven states, and we're looking forward to getting these online as well. So if there are any questions or anything comes up, I'm here to answer any questions for the attorney.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? I see, yes, sir. Please come forward.
Yes, hello. I'm Sam Raningham. I'm a landowner where the solar farm is being built. We're the last house on the lane. There's three houses, and we're the very last house. But I did not know about the public hearing. You mentioned that the public hearing had been properly advertised. There were no signs put up in the neighborhood telling us about this. We just found out this morning by word of mouth that this was being held today. So I just wanted to address that, whether you put it in the newspaper or what, but that's, you're in the chair at this point. I just was wanting to ask if there were changes made to the plan since it was approved by the planning commission approximately three years ago. We were at those meetings and it was agreed to. But at that point, it was, the stipulation was that transformer lines were going to be put in on Ebony Drive. I know initially the company wanted to put them up Aladdin Drive, Dorothy Drive, through the church parking area, but I think they changed that, they did change that before it was approved three years ago, and it was going to go through Ebony. I just want to make sure there had been no change there. And also, at that, in that agreement, they told us that they would do whatever was necessary to shield our property from having to look at the solar farm all the time. We're 150 feet from the solar farm. Our house, like I said, is remote. We've been there 45 years. We built the house in 1983, and our front porch is going to look directly on the solar farm. So, and it's only 150 feet away. They did leave a 90-foot buffer. They came in and cleared all the trees three years ago to put the farm in, and nothing happened. But they did agree to leave a 90-foot buffer, but still, our front porch is 60 feet from that boundary line. So we're looking at 150 feet of clearance between our front porch where we have our bird feeders and sit regularly now that they're retired. And so they agreed that they would do whatever was necessary to shield the solar farm from us. Summertime is fine. There's spindly trees there that have leaves on them, but in winter time, it's going to be looking like through toothpaste, and we're going to see it all the time. So I just wanted the assurance again today that that was going to happen, and that they're not going to come in and put four-foot, one-gallon potted plants every 10 feet apart, expect them to shield us from the solar farm. Might do it in 30 years, but nothing immediate is going to be satisfactory. So I was here, I wanted to ask for assurances again that that would happen. I think we've got a 400-foot drainage on our property line, and I'd like to have something substantial there to shield us from having to sit there and stare at that solar farm after being in this remote area for 45 years, and now it's just complete change for us, of course. Bless my heart.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address? Yes, sir.
I'm Paul Nicholson. I'm a 75-year resident in the community for this solar farm. I'm within 30 feet of the water supply, the creek, which Mr. Crawley ignored when he plotted the place. I'm afraid I'm not up to date. What are the proposals? All I get is a piece of paper. Says y'all have an agreement, some or another. What is the deal about the siting? The capitalists, including myself, are definitely opposed. It is detrimental to the community and that neighborhood, which I've been there 75 years. I mean, I've had water come down from the drainage from that, come over the road, stop the traffic to the church. They couldn't drive through it. Since then, it's been improved a little bit. The church built a ball field, but sometimes it comes to the top. But Mr. Crawley and his knowledge hasn't ignored that. I got a topographic thing from him. I didn't bring it in. I didn't know I had time five minutes. So I got, I got more to say. I got a door that was done by the county, a cadrone of that water supply. He won't acknowledge it. I'm downstream. Every time I have a hard rain, I have to deal with it. I've been there 75 years, sir. I've seen it all. I know what can happen. I've lived there. There's five springs above me. I've been at every one of them, drank water out of them. But now I'm having to deal with it. You people, somebody decided ahead of time how to vote. Y'all took more than five minutes to make a decision. I ain't got the five minutes. Y'all talking about my life, the community, and the people that are opposed to it. Lot of people ain't got enough grit. I'm mad about it, and it's a bad thing to do. The gentleman owned the land. He got it by inheritance. He tried to sell it, but he decided to cut down 200 acres of deciduous trees, which produce oxygen, okay? Cut it down, now we're going to go up and put this thing in, going to improve the power supply, it's going to improve the air. You can actually breathe it when he gets in. The trees produce oxygen, okay? So all we got left is, but, and people are going to understand what you get. Don't say, oh, they put out 50 watts apiece. Most people don't know the difference from DC to AC. I know, I've been electrician for 62 years. You ain't going to change DC to AC. DC is the only thing that's going to heat your water. I do this, but it won't run a motor. And another thing, it's not quiet. I've dealt with it long enough, I know what it does. But now we're going to make everything better. All these people, the women, everybody, they think the power's going down right away. That is bull crap. It will not go down. What we're losing is clear air, and we've got a detriment problem of water coming down. But I got no violent holiday to. Are you people qualified to make a decision on this? I'm qualified because I've been there. You people can do what you want. I don't have records. I know what happens. Every time I come up here and express how I was opposed to this thing from outset, all I got that throws me to the lions, but I'm still killing lions as long as I can. So do something right for people. We don't need the money. Your power's not coming down, I assure you. It's going to cost you more. One sale don't produce but 500 watts, if you understand watts. Your house takes 15,000 watts to control it. Your thing's going to be humming 24 hours a day. So all I do is plead to you as a citizen, I'm a taxpayer citizen. I'm determined to try to do something about it, but nobody listens. You people got a chance to listen, do something, or else you'll hear from me again in any way I can. Appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on this siting agreement, public Anyone else? I will close the public hearing then at 6:29. Mr. Pruitt, this is in your district. Do you wish to address any of the items or anything, need clarification from Mr. Clark's office?
If Mr. Clark could come up and explain the, I mean, the mailings that went out, I assume to the...
Not about the siting.
Yeah, but in general of the, what happened?
That's been three years ago now, this time before the inter-county board of zoning appeals. We had lengthy public hearings. We may have even had two. It may have gotten postponed, and we had another one after that. There is a large buffer on the one side next to the right of way, I think it's Aladdin, that goes through the church parking lot and beyond. There's extra trees that are required to be planted. I know that there's also been a private agreement between, and I'll have to let the representative of the company speak to that because we were not involved, but I believe there has been a private agreement between the company and the church that allows them to tie in to a substation that is behind the church. The buffer will still be there, but they are allowing them to cut a path through this buffer to tie into the substation. I don't remember the issue that the gentleman talked about with the drainage. The original designer did submit to us, the professional engineer, that the drainage was adequate. I have seen over the years, Mr. Pruitt, maybe you have too, I have seen where there's been water across that road before. All we can do is go by what the engineer designs, that either it's adequate or the new design is going to be adequate to carry the water. Were there any other parts to that question? There were, of course, letters sent to everyone that was enjoying property and across the road from this property back in 2022 when we held those public hearings. I don't believe there's any kind of notice that's required for these siting agreements. Actually, my office is not involved in the siting agreements at all. That's a totally separate process. So that's all I have.
Mr. Lyle, would you like to speak on the?
Oh, the notice?
Yeah.
So we do not, the notice requirement for a siting agreement is similar to any, or to most actions of the Board of Supervisors, we're required to advertise it in the newspaper and make it available. I think it's advertised twice, and then we make the actual document available at the county administrator's office. This is all as described in the Code of Virginia. What he was probably speaking of is in many land use cases, the county does go to extra expense and posts for zoning changes, post signs on properties, but that is, that's not what the code specifies for this agreement.
Other items for mine, this is the first time I've heard from either of those individuals. I've talked to others in the immediate area. None of those have had anything negative to say. The responses that I got from the general area about solar that's down the street over on Old Sand Road was complaints about the burning. We did address that in the siting agreements, that there cannot be any burning there, and that's in both of the siting agreements that we'll speak on tonight. But like I said, other than that, I've had zero complaints, other than the two we've heard tonight.
All right, with this being in your district, do you want to offer any motion?
I make a motion to approve the siting agreement from Firebird Solar LLC as presented.
No motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or clarification needed? All in favor? Opposed? It's 3-3, so the motion?
Mr. Floyd, can I know what you're voting for? I don't care as well as everybody in here. What are you voting on?
Sir, if you'll give us a moment to conclude business.
I understand, sir. I've been here before, and you want to lead. You bring two deputies this time, one the last time. I want to know what you're voting on. I wanna know what you're voting on now.
Sir, if you just take a minute, you'll find out just in a few minutes. If you could just...
The motion fails on a three-to-three vote. A tie fails. So this motion failed based upon it being a three-three tie vote.
I'm in favor of hoping these proposals, whoever this gentleman is over there, he seems to come up every time we talk. Is he from Mr. Crawley? I wanna know who you represent. Don't you touch me no more. Don't you touch me no more. They'll have to come over here and literally help us. You might have a finger, but I ain't voting.
You want, you want, you want. I was just trying to see if you wanted. You guys wanted the motion. So you say one. That's all I'm trying to explain. I like saying because here, I'm just trying to explain to you that you guys want to hear, so it didn't stay there.
Agenda item eighteen, public hearing, proposed siding agreement with Thunderbird Solar LLC. Mr. Lyle.
Thunderbird Solar LLC desires to develop a solar generation facility at, again, in the Ridgeway District at the end of Avenue Drive. This siding agreement, like the last one, was, was advertised in, in the newspaper twice. The, this agreement calls for payments to the county. It's, it has, it will generate slightly more megawatts, and this one calls for payments of, that will total one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the county should the facility be developed and come to full capacity at generation.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this public hearing at six thirty-six. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this public hearing? Yes, sir.
Is it necessary?
Please, please, please come to the podium.
Not sure if it's necessary. I understood these were two separate names with the same project. So you have to do separate votes on these two things?
It, it is a separate agenda item, yes, sir, to answer your question. Please state your name so that we have that for this public hearing record.
Lone Landowner at the end of, and the end of Aladdin Drive, where the solar farm is being built. I don't know which is Thunderbird or Firebird is the one that is closest to our property. I just thought it was same, same project with two names, but I just don't wanna take up your time. I just repeat the same comments that I made earlier. Is that necessary for me to say more? Is it necessary for me to repeat myself from what I said?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to address? Yes, sir.
Ed Switzer with Catalyst. I just wanted to add on the Stormwater that we did get our approval from the Virginia DEQ for our design. So we're, you know, we received all of our approvals from a engineering perspective for the solar design. So that was it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to address the board during this public hearing? Seeing no indication, I will close this public hearing at six thirty-nine. Likewise, Mr. Pruitt, is there any clarification needed on this?
No, my, my comments and motion will, will echo the last, so I'll make a motion to approve the siding agreement from Thunderbird Solar LLC as presented.
Second. Well, a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion fails on a three-three tie. That takes us to agenda item nineteen, matters presented by the public. We have Mr. Matt Davis that had signed up. Matt, if you'll come to the podium, please.
Good evening. Matt Davis of the Red Creek District. I'm part of Greater Bassett Area Community Incorporated, GBAC. I'm the president. Came here tonight just to speak to some of our efforts addressing trash in the community, which is a, a large topic with a lot of individuals receive quite a bit of it on a regular basis. Most recently, we applied for a adopted highway, and we're approved for that through VDOT and people over there at that office. And they put up signs for us to acknowledge our efforts. We've been doing this since 2009, 2010, where we go out in the community and pick up trash, mainly along the Ferrystone Park Highway. We do mowings, we do plantings, we prune and try to keep the place look presentable. It's an everyday battle, an ongoing thing. Every time you turn around, after you've done the trash pickup, there's more trash out there. This could just be an educational thing. It could be a, something where some people just can pay a little bit better attention to the way they transport trash or what they do with their trash as they go down the road there. It's frustrating sometimes, so, you know, but we try to address it the best we can. I just have some volunteers. We've got a three-mile stretch. We do it from Stanley Town down to Lenora, which is now in front of the old Bassett Chair Factory, the Virginia Fire Museum. And we try to break it up into like half-mile sections, send out some people to pick it up. So VDOT, for the, for the adopted highway, they ask that you pick up twice a year. They ask that you go online and you submit that you've done it. We've kind of break it up to where however many people I have, I try to do them in a half-mile section, and that usually takes about two hours of picking up trash. And for volunteers, that's a pretty good volunteer day. Just go out there and take care of that, especially during the hot months and the cold. We would like to encourage more of the community to get involved. We'd like to encourage more civic groups to get involved, churches to get involved. The more we can, as a community, can try to knock down the trash and get everybody out there to understand what they can do personally to help with the trash situation. We're proponents of that. I've been a lifelong proponent of recycling. I've made an attempt at a business to recycle plastics. Wasn't that successful at it. I've been involved with the church where I was recycling things for Boy Scouts that they could get a little bit of the revenue from it. There's not a great deal of revenue when it comes to recycling, and that is one of those things out there. That's not an incentive for people to get involved in doing this. We would go to, if there's a few recyclers in the community, EMI is one. We had a bin for cardboard and magazines and things like this. And for them to come and pick it up from the church and take it back to them a mile down the road would wipe out whatever revenues that we got from the recycling that they could possibly get from it. I understand that. So then I would take it to them and try to kind of split that a little bit. So I delivered the recyclables, and then they would give us the small monetary value of it, and then I'd give it back to the scouts. There's, you know, recycling metals in cans, you know, that's out there. That'd be profitable to some extent. Lot of effort, you know, a lot of quantity, timing, trying to fix this up and make sure that you can get that to them as well. Same kind of thing. Gotta put forth an effort and deliver it, and then you see what you can get from it. So it's, it's small. But I would hope that the community could find ways to involve themselves in making the area look better. So property owners, if there was some way to maybe to incentivize them to recycle or pick up trash in front of their areas, I'm not quite sure. You know, there's many different ideas out there that could possibly benefit the community if these guys could, if homeowners could, property owners could take care of some of the trash themselves. There's a lot of volunteer groups out there. I'm aware of them, trying to pick up and help with the thing. It just seems that we're kind of sporadic, and it's an uphill battle because as soon as you turn around, there's more trash out there. I've, like, you know, been a resident of this area for quite a while, and I know how it is to take your trash to the green boxes, to go to the convenience sites. And a lot of times you'll find that there's trash that is blown out the back of somebody's truck as they went there, and then it's on the side of the road. Personally, always amazed that somebody doesn't see that that might be their bag as they go back by it again after they've visited the trash. So each of these little spots demand a little bit more attention. You know, demand that people stop, pay attention to where they're going, and they go and pick up the trash. I would hope that there would be things that we can do in each district to encourage people to take some pride in the community and pick up the trash, address recycling. It's, it's a tough situation. There's not, people don't see a whole lot of value to it because there's not much value in it other than taking care of your home, taking care of your community, and its presentation to the rest of the world out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there others wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Yes, sir.
My name is David Craig. I'm in the Blackberry District, and I've been working with Matt on some of this cleanup. And some of the problem is, if you do it enough times, you'll see, you'll start seeing a pattern, and you'll start seeing certain things, certain type of trash, like beer cans and cigarette packs always showing back up. And it's, it's like the same kind of brand beer. And it's always at, it seems like it's always at nighttime, and it's in the wooded sections where no houses around. And so a lot of this trash, to me, is being generated from these little, like Dollar General or these little small convenience stores and the gas stations that stay open all night long and the vape shops. You know, I see the Dollar General bags flying around everywhere, the trash, the beer cans. And also on, you know, trying to get the community involved, there's a psychological analysis, and it's called the broken window theory, which is, it suggests that visible signs of disorder, like trash and broken windows, can create an environment that encourages further disorder and even more serious crime. The theory deposits that neglecting minor issues like littering signals a lack of care and control, leading to a perception that the area is uncared for and attracting further negligence and behavior. And, and this has also been done, they've done crime studies on it too, and, you know, areas where, you know, they neglect stuff, the crime gets higher, and it just, and it exacerbates the situation. So, you know, working with other communities to try to keep it cleaned up is, you know, it helps. But we need to also address where or who is generating this trash and throwing it out. And I think, you know, if the sheriff department or somebody can be a little bit more enforceful on the littering problems so that we can try to, you know, help stop some of these problems in, in the beginning. And on another issue is the property right of way, and I'm glad Lisa is still here on this, because it's concerning mowing. Where, at what point does the VDOT take over the right of way and relieve the property owner of doing any kind of upkeep or mowing? It's basically on intersections where the grass grows up so high that it creates, that blocks the view and creates a safety issue. Because it's, it's a couple of sections that I've gone out to over the past three years, two or three times a year, and I'll just take a sling blade or a machete and just cut the grass down at the intersection so you can see down the intersection. I know the tissue has really been bad because, you know, all the rain and stuff is creating a lot more growth. But, you know, at what point does the property owner is a hundred percent relieved of trying to maintain their property right, especially in these areas where it creates a safety hazard? You know, being either business or residential. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Okay.
Mr. Adams, is this, I apologize. Is this also the people that have signed up to speak? Or is it, is that something different?
It was only the one.
The only one that was signed to speak under this matters presented by the public was Mr. Davis.
Okay. Well, I, I didn't know if anybody would sign it because I know I asked Mr. Arrington to come up and, and speak for matters of the public. Is this when he would do that? Is this when he would do that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Come on up.
Well, thank you. I'm working with Danny Turner, former mayor of the city of Marshall. Working with Mr. Arrington on a project. Danny convinced us, one of his lifelong dreams is to reset the NASCAR speed record. And I wanted to know if I could help him. I have developed cancer and battled that battle. And I said, let's go ahead and see if we can do this. So I've presented to you Joey Arrington with, with his idea and tell you what we're planning to do.
All right. Anyway, some may know, some may not know. I've been playing with cars since South Marshall, Bigsboro, Law Park, FC. So anyway, I'm approaching seventy now, and I still play with cars. But anyway, in nineteen, in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy, there was an era award between Dodge and Ford, Chrysler and Ford. And in nineteen, at the end of nineteen seventy, NASCAR said you can't use any more of these era-type base cars anymore. So race team by the name of K.K. Insurance, Bobby Ives, went to the Bonneville Salt Flats and set a record in nineteen seventy-one at two hundred and sixteen point something mile per hour. Then in two thousand and seven, Dodge approached me when I was at Patriot Center Park, and a gentleman by the name of Russ Wicks, and they wanted to go reset the record at Bonneville. So we built the engine there and went to Bonneville in two thousand and seven and run two forty-four point nine. So Danny and I got to talking about what can we do for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of this country? And I said, well, all I can do is make something louder. So anyway, we got to talking about it, and we approached the Virginia Two-Fifty Committee and also the Tobacco Commission, and they, they agreed to help some. But at the end of the day, we want to go to Cape Canaveral in Florida. They got a three-mile track that's within a quarter inch, the surface for three miles is within a quarter inch. Reason for that is the salt works on the race car, so it eventually eat it all up. And January in Florida, two thousand and twenty-six is pretty appealing. So anyway, this is sort of what the car is gonna look like. It's a nineteen sixty-nine body race car. It built, it was built off a two thousand and seven Dodge Charger chassis. So anyway, we hope to represent well the South Side community and hopefully get, get attention of businesses, bring their jobs our direction. So anyway, that's our plan. That's all I'll have to say. Danny?
Well, one of the things, we, when we went to the Tobacco Commission, and we also went to the Two-Five Oth Commission, we wanted to highlight this area. The record was, the record engine that provided the record was built here right, right down the road here in Hendrick County, and this engine's gonna be built in the city of Marshall, Sears, the former Sears building. But we're partnering with Danville, Pennsylvania County, and hopefully Halifax County, and it's gonna be a South Side region where we feel like it's one of the nicest regions in the world to live, and we want to showcase our industrial parks in this region, our natural resources, the place to come play and have fun and, and to live. And so we felt this might be our big opportunity. I'd like to introduce someone who's agreed to help us with this.
Sure. I'm a little bumpkin. I'm a big guy. Anyway, so yeah, this, look, the Virginia Two-Fifty is a very cool thing coming up next year. Virginia turns two hundred and fifty years old. And so as a celebration of that, that committee is co-chaired by Carly Fiorina, who used to be the CEO of Kirkpatrick, also running president, and then my friend and mentor Terry Austin out of Potat. And I know Terry's been working closely with you guys on that. And I'll just tell you a quick anecdotal story. You know, they get a lot of people wanting to do a lot of things. They have mobile museums. They have something uptown at the courthouse in Marshall recently with the Two-Fifty Commission, things like that. And he said, you guys brought this idea to him. I'll throw him another bus. He said, oh, that's cool, but I don't know that that really fits. And he started telling one of the, some of his younger staffers about what you were doing. And they, they said, actually, that's something I would be into on the Two-Fifty. I'm not gonna come out looking at a mobile museum. I'd love to tune in and watch somebody try to break the speed record. So then he took an interest in it and gave him fifty thousand dollars from the Virginia Two-Fifty, which... So then he took an interest in it and gave him $50,000 from the 250, which the Tobacco Commission agreed to match funds with another 50. And what do you guys count as 250?
230.
230. So there's 100,000 of that. And I know they're working hard with some private business owners and others to support this project and the municipalities. So I do think it's a worthwhile project. I think the state sees value in it. That's why they put 100,000 into it. And it's always cool for them to highlight Martinsville, Henry County, Pennsylvania County, and Danville, which I'm proud to represent most all of. So I hope you look favorably on this. And Joey's obviously got the expertise and the know-how, been there and done that. And so we believe we can do it again. So thanks for your time.
And I'd like to, we've got a Virginia, State of Virginia and Michigan are trying to see who can celebrate the 250 of the country best. And of course, the war ended in Virginia and our leadership in Massachusetts, they started the war but didn't finish it. So it ended, and it ended starting, you could make an argument it's ended. At the beginning of the end, started in Henry County, what now is Fieldale. And the Virginia militia was trained there. They went with Nathan Greenall, who went to Yorktown and for the surrender. So we've got a very proud heritage here and the war ended five years later. So it's our goal and tourism, and Mr. Arrington owns the Fieldcrest Lodge, and tourism for the next five years, this would be an international place, maybe a trail to victory for the United States and have it start in Henry County. So here's a, there, the state's official logo, we'll give it to the county, we'll give it to the city. And I'd like to, I'd like to have y'all display it somewhere. And it's going to be one heck of a party next year for our 250th anniversary of the United States. And thank you.
Is anyone else?
Do you need a driver?
He has a Danville driver, a paint seller is going to be a driver. Now, he might need a backup driver.
Count me in.
Is anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Yes, sir.
Is this, I think I might be on the agenda, is that included?
I didn't have your name listed on the agenda, but you're welcome to speak with matters presented by the public. Just state your name and subject.
Michael Tipton. I'm talking about 69 Jefferson Martin Highway, I'm the last one, trying to get VDOT to upgrade the drain system. I just want to get like an update. I know it's Lisa's, Lisa said something about Lisa, talking to some other ones over, maybe I'll get to talk to her. But I just wanted to bring back from the board, you know, the ditches and stuff and also hasn't, the ditches and stuff, ain't nothing been done yet, you know. So I was still concerned about it and some of the guys were talking about having trash. And so that brings a veil, you know, you make that noise, it's a lot of trash and people walk something down that road and throw some trash over the ditch and that's what's been stopping up my drains. So definitely need some, it'd be good to have volunteers to pick up trash and stuff. But anyway, like I said, I'm not talking to Lisa after the meeting and trying to get it updated. I know a guy coming from Salem, but he went on vacation for a couple of weeks, but he did call back this week. He said Kenny King and him, supposed to be having a meeting and he couldn't give me no answer yet, but they still want to have a meeting. So I'm just hoping it don't fall down the rain before we get around doing so. But that's all.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Anyone else? That takes us to Agenda Item 20, which is a call for adjournment. If I could have a motion. So move.
Second.
Dr. Cobb, did you have something to say?
Yes, I guess I was still wondering about maybe, and again, the protocol for it. So I apologize if I'm not following exact protocol, about having, having a conversation with, with Lisa here and Delegate Phillips for the discussion, brief discussion about the budget and how that would, how that would work in terms of the, our budget for our community, which is approved by the delegates. And because we've heard that, well, there's just not that much money in our budget. And I came to almost every supervisors' meeting before I was elected and at every meeting, someone brought up a road issue or a trash issue. So I'm saying that we're here, so we just, we needed, we need to talk about it, we need to ramp things up in terms of what we ask for potentially in a budget, bigger budget for the roads, if that's an option. Give Lisa maybe more to work with. And then for Lisa's purposes, what in the world can we do better or more of than we're not doing now? Because we hear, yeah, the, the trash flies off the truck. That's what, somebody said that to me, was a lot of truck drivers and they had a lot of trash on the truck. Okay. And then to Timmy back there with, with the Sheriff's Department, how, how can they possibly? Because he, he goes by my house almost every day and I'm amazed at the amount of trash daily that's being picked up. Sheriff's Department's not going to be able to get all the trash. So for Lisa and for Delegate Phillips and for the board, what can we do to address these, what in my opinion is becoming an extraordinary issue? And one more thing about that, I probably get a call or mention something at least weekly, not daily, but at least weekly. The intersections where is the, the intersections is the Department of Transportation's responsibility? Like, okay, well, yeah, we'll, we'll get to it. And then to Matt's, because Matt's in my district and we have the GBAC and they work every month, they're picking up trash, planting trees and mowing and doing all that stuff. They have an adopt a highway sign now, which is amazing. What can we do to encourage groups throughout the entire county to do more of that? I just feel like that we're at the point where we talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it, but what is the next level of work that can be done to address this extraordinary issue of trash and grass and potholes? Okay. And that's, and I don't, in terms of Mr. Adams, a conversation or table it for another time, I just wanted to make sure that while I kept them here, that we could talk about it.
Well.
For the, yeah, the protocol part, I'm not sure.
That's whatever's acceptable to the board, but it may be a lengthy conversation and I'm, I'm positive they have heard what you're saying.
Yes.
And it may be something that you all want to circle, circle together and talk about.
Okay.
But if, if they want to offer comments.
Just a quick, I know we.
I'll let, I'll let her do it first.
Okay. I mean, three minutes maybe? Okay.
Now, the funding that we receive is mostly from gas tax and recordation fees, some other miscellaneous fees, but that is collected statewide and, and maintenance is funded off the top, which includes patching potholes, what we do, patching, mowing, those type of issues are considered maintenance, funded off the top of the budget, comes down to the Salem District. And we're funded pretty much historically, year to year. We, we get small increases, but we're like everybody else that works on a budget. It's, you know, it's never enough. But, but we do, I think we do very well with what we receive. And we try to do our best to spend it wisely and, you know, do what we're supposed to do. And in regards to the mowing, that's our policy, is that the primary and secondary roads get mowed three times a year. I'd love to mow five times a year. This year, we needed six times a year, but, you know, we just, just aren't able to do that and accomplish our other tasks, which are, are patching and.
Ditching.
Shoulder work. You know, we, we do a lot more than, than mow and those are necessary as well. But we do have a fixed budget that, again, it's typically funded historically, but, but we do, our revenue comes from gas tax.
You know, and now that you're into discussing of it, you know, the, the things that I see about grass, you know, and it's not only here in Henry County, it's so that counties also, we're not the only one dealing with the grass issue. And we're not the only state dealing with grass issue. But the thing that I look at, because it's my county, or, you know, I live in this county, is that, you know, we're, we're striving hard to get industries and new business into this area. You know, we're working really hard. And when we have an area that just don't look presentable, you know, to somebody from outside coming to this area, it, it's not good for this county. Okay? Delegate Eric Phillips, my request would be to you is to go back and talk to your delegates and say, how can we get funding for Henry County to get the grass mowed? Because you're riding down Commonwealth Boulevard from the city limits and the grass looks decent until you hit the county limits and the grass is about three foot tall. Then you come down Kings Mountain Road and the grass now is about a foot and a half taller, better. I mean, you've got people that's coming to this area not only to do business, but to look at moving to this area. And then, and it, it's a hindrance, you know, to, to the.
So a couple of things. Obviously, we do a state budget, we don't do it by county. So I don't know how VDOT inside of VDOT, I don't know if Lisa does either, how they allocate their money, how much each county gets. I'm sure there's some kind of formula for that. But besides grass, I want to speak to roads. We certainly do not get our fair share of money through VDOT for fixing roads, for repaving roads, for infrastructure, for general. I know that we are trying to put together a rural roads package that will target specific districts within the Commonwealth. And when I say that, I don't mean necessarily delegate districts, just regions of the state that would be considered rural, which is most of Southwest, South Side, and Central Virginia, outside of metro areas. Virginia uses a smart scale program that we never qualify for any money under. And there's a lot of consternation about that because what happens when you have an area that is growing economically but still doesn't hit all the metrics? I deal with that again in Pennsylvania County when you've got, you know, thousands of jobs coming to a mega park, they suddenly have to, and the state found the money to, to put a new road in there, to get an access road back to the bypass. So I think we just have to work in conjunction with one another. But overall, you know, it's just like you guys. You guys struggle to make a budget that hits every mark and hit every need exactly how you would want to do it. So I think that that is where, where the state is. But I would be interested personally, that I don't, you know, know how they allocate inside of their own budget, how much they spend on grass versus how much they spend on other things. But I can say this, in my time as two years of delegate, just recently, factually, it was in your district that I had a constituent reach out and ask for some help right there around the bridge area near a gun shop. And Lisa and her folks went straight over there within a few days. I think you're aware of it, right? You probably made some calls.
I was the one that generated that.
Well, I don't know, they called my office and it got done as well. But I think there's some people camp in there, whatever. So the point is, I think when we present them with those things, they re-prioritize and try to, try to do the best they can. But again, they've got only so many employees, so many people. But listen, I've lived in this area most of my life as well. I couldn't agree with you more. I remember riding down the bypass, it was before race weekend and I thought, thank God the race is coming up because it'll get cleaned up. It was embarrassing. I was ashamed to think if we had someone from out of town riding up through here and our main thoroughfare, how much trash and things like that were just thrown out of the window. So I know I've met with Dale and Mr. Adams, Chairman Adams, I think we were the ones two there maybe, and we talked about some of what we could do and some of what some other surrounding counties do. I talked with Supervisor Cobbler as well. But it is something I think that, you know, one, we need to do some messaging, one, we need to do some special event days where we go as a community. I, I will sponsor some of it through one of my businesses, the trash bag and the gloves and the whatever else, where we put a focus on, you know, keep Henry County clean or whatever. It's not my job to figure out your slogan, but we do need to do something. And there needs to be more public awareness about it. There's a lot of complaints about it, but we need more people to get involved and help do something about it. And so, you know, as far as how VDOT allocates their money inside of that joke, that would be a question for, for Lisa and really probably someone up the food chain from Lisa, as far as they spend, how they spend their money. We give them, you know, a budgetary amount for the entire state. But I do think we need some special help in growing rural areas like the 48th District. And that's something that we are looking to put in the next annual budget. Answer your question. So I don't know if you want to answer the second one? All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that?
Yes, and thank you for your lenience.
Okay. Mr. Wagner, is there any other board business that we need to consider prior to adjournment?
I don't have any.
Board members, do you have any?
Just 30 seconds. And I'm very pleased with the number of folk who came out and, you know, took part in the meeting tonight. And hopefully we can get that same kind of conversation with some of the other problems that we have. And I think as a community, I like what Delegate Phillips said, you know, if we can get folk to take pride in our community, some of these things will go away. I know folk who go out and, you know, they mow the yard on the side of the road because they take pride and we just need more folk doing that. And hopefully we can create some type of energy where people really truly take pride in our community and in themselves first and foremost. If you take pride in, you know, your area, your space, you know, you'll want that, you know, throughout your community. And that goes to, you know, your cars, you know, you, the way you conduct yourself, the way you carry yourself. And hopefully, you know, we can come up with some things amongst us that will inspire that pride. You know, I'll say it that way because if that pride is inspired, then all of a sudden everybody's out doing what the folk in the Blackberry District are doing. And, you know, VDOT has a lot of help and, you know, Henry County looks the way we want Henry County to look and people are not, you know, showing up at Walmart in pajamas and all this stuff. But I'm not going to get into that tangent. I'm going to leave that alone so I don't get, you know, somebody's TikTok or something. And that, that's it.
All right. Other business items, any other items? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
We already made that motion.
Well, we got us straight, so let's start again.
Second, second.
And a second. All in favor? Six zero. Jennifer, everyone have a good evening.